Okay, is we open up this November ninth, two thousand and twenty one, I call this meeting to order of the Select Board. First item on the agenda, we do have a public comment period, which we added a couple meetings ago, which allows citizens to come before the board with questions or comments that are in our jurisdiction. And tonight, we do have a citizen that wishes to speak with us. So I would invite you up to the table, and thank you for coming in. Right there is perfectly fine. Either pick a seat that's comfortable, even though they're all the same. First, please just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mariana Epstein.
And you can just pull that microphone just close. Absolutely.
Okay, like this. I'm Mariana Epstein. I live at fourteen Elder Road in Needham. I have been in Needham for about thirty years. And I love our town. And I'm here. All right, that's all I need to say about myself.
Sure, Ms. Epstein, and welcome to the board, first of all. I want you to feel comfortable. I know it's hard when you have a board around you. You are limited in comments by our policy to three minutes. I know that our website might have had, you know, the different time on this meeting, but I'll give you a little leeway, you know, three to four, but we want to keep that stay with our agenda. So please proceed.
Sure. So I want to express concern about the decision that has been made by the Department of Public Works about seasonal closure of the so-called swap shop at the RTS. I assume you all know about that. So I don't need to cover what it is. I am nobody. I'm not representing anybody. I'm not a part of the volunteer group. I'm not in any way connected to the swap shop or RTS or anything. But I know hundreds of people that are concerned, and I understand maybe you all or some of you have heard from others, there are hundreds of signatures on a petition that's being collected. I have not coordinated with any of those people, but I am sure that I represent a relatively significant group of Needamites who are concerned about these decisions and are asking everybody who can to influence and to reverse it. I have spoken to the DPW director, and I have read the press release. I know the reasons that were explained. The main reason the DPW director said was this lack of personnel for snow removal. And I asked why the shop cannot be closed for just the snow days. And we know what snow days are. That's when schools are closed. And she said, it's not only that day, it's also the next day. And I said, sure, close it for two days, that day and the next day. And she had no answer for me why that's not acceptable. But I'm not here to validate, to evaluate the reasons. That's not my job. What I'm trying to say, my main point is, if the community is sending a loud message that the community wants this program to continue, then the management job is to say closing it is not an option. We have a problem. We need to find a way to solve them in some other way. That's how I'm asked at work. If I'm offering a solution that's not acceptable, I have to just find a different solution. I'm sure there, everybody is coming to this from the, with the best intention. I'm sure that the directors and the managers' goal is to keep us safe there. But I'm not just not sure that that decision was weighed enough against the community interest in this program. So I'm trying to deliver a message that please find a different solution. I don't know your, or I don't know the problems that RTS faces. I hear them. But I'm just saying, this is not a solution that that should be used in this case. I think that it will impact the most, the poorest part of the town, because I have heard there are people who have no other sources of gifts for their children for the holiday season. It's particularly bad to close it for December, when there are families that get their gifts from there. I'm a person who mostly drops things there rather than take them. And I care about all extra plastic that will find its way into the trash because of this closure. And again, the DPW director said that there's no plan to use this time of closure to restructure to find a different place for the program. It's going to stay the same place for the next year. So it's not a long term solution. I just want to say one thing.
One more thing, Ms. Epstein. Thank you. Yes.
I came from the Soviet Union. I know how important it is when people can influence what's happening. I lived in Needham for the time when Elliot Elementary School was about to be closed. And we, citizens, changed that decision because the town heard our voices. And they just hope that this is going to be the second case of the influence that this community has. That's, that's it.
Ms. Epstein, I really want to thank you for coming for the board. And you're right, you know, the town, the government works for the people of the town. So it's very important to hear that. With that, I would ask if you could step away from the table. You will take your comments under advisement. I do know that Charis is on this Zoom call. And I don't want this to be a debate back and forth. That's not what this is intended for. But if you could just clarify to see if there is any option, because we have heard from other people who wish to have this remain open longer. Ms. Lustig, Director of Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have spoken to the board before about concerns related to snow removal this year, as well as the location of the swap shop when we have inclement weather and we have freezing and thawing cycles during the winter. I've also heard from residents who, and volunteers who are very passionate about the swap shop and the resource that it provides our community. The primary area that I have heard feedback from has been around the month of December and the high utilization of the facility during that time. I've also heard, or we've experienced a relatively mild fall. So I have talked with the leadership at the RTS and in DPW, as well as the volunteer coordinator for the swap shop. And we have decided that we would extend the seasonality of the swap shop through December thirty first, or until we have our first plowable snow event, whichever comes first. So we are looking at extending the hours, or the seasonality of the swap shop, to deal with the issues of winter weather by building in this caveat that if we do have a prediction in the forecast of a plowable snow event, that that would be the end date for the swap shop for this season.
Okay, thank you for being flexible with that arrangement. And it's something that I know the board will be looking at, the DPW will be looking at as we move forward. But I think that solution that you suggest right now seems to be feasible, and hopefully we won't have a plowable snow until the end of December. So thank you, Ms. Epstein, for coming in for your comments. And thanks, Ms. Lustig, for looking into the issue. We now get to the first item, and I see Ms. Cooley, welcome. You can hear us.
Yes.
Nice to see you. First item on the agenda, Veterans Day proclamation. And just to open that up, we have an event at Memorial Park on Thursday, November eleventh, at eleven a.m. We encourage all citizens to join that speeches. And we have Marcus here with the proclamation. He'll be saying it this evening and also on the eleventh. So with that, Mr. Nelson.
Thanks, man. So I'll be reading the proclamation for Veterans Day. Whereas, on Veterans Day, our nation comes together to honor veterans and commemorate their legacy of service and sacrifice. And whereas, Needham residents have answered the call of duty in every war and expedition in our nation's history to ensure the security of our country and its ideals. And whereas, returning veterans contribute in important ways to the civic life of our town. And whereas, their service performed with a sense of duty and honor reflects great credit upon themselves and upon our community. Now, therefore, the Select Board of the Town of Needham do hereby recognize Thursday, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty one, as Veterans Day and ask citizens to, citizens of the town to join in appropriate observance of those who have served preserving the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And that's in the form of a motion. Is that correct?
So yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. We will come, any discussion? We'll come to a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is unanimous. And we look forward to seeing you the eleventh at eleven. Get there a little bit early so you don't miss any of the exercises. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, RCN cable television contract renewal. And this is a public hearing, and I have an opening statement to that effect. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Needham's public hearing on RCN's cable license renewal. I am Matt Borelli, Chairman of the Select Board, which is the Cable License Issuing Authority under Master and Underlaws, Chapter one sixty six A. With me tonight are my fellow Select Board members and the town's Cable Council, Bill August, who is coming via Zoom. Notice that this hearing was posted in local newspapers over the prior two successive weeks. Copies of legal advertisements are here entered into the record as ascertainment hearing exhibits one and two. By way of background for the public, state law requires the holding of a public hearing prior to final action on a proposed renewal license, which shall include opportunity for public comment on town needs, RCN performance, and the proposed renewal license. Based on information before us this evening, the Select Board may take final action on and approve or deny the renewed proposal before us this evening, the renewal proposal. Public comments, if any, as well as questions to RCN, should be directed through me, and I will rule whether or not they are in order. Please keep your comments no longer than four minutes. And before hearing from the public, let's first recognize Tom Steele of RCN. And then we will accept comments from the public, if any, followed by the Select Board discussion of the proposed renewal and possible motion regarding final action on the proposed renewal. Is Mr. Steele?
I think, I think I'm unmuted.
There you are. Welcome.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
My name is Tom Steele. I'm Vice President, Regulatory Council for RCN. Been doing this a number of times now in Needham, which is encouraging. Been there over twenty years. And we're particularly proud of the partnership we share with the town with hundreds of miles of fiber for the institutional network, which serves the town's cable needs for distributing video, but also its data needs as well. And we all know how important data is these days. And so we're proud to partner with it. And in fact, I know Needham's been busy over the last term of our early alliance, where with new buildings and we've been changing and trying to adapt the institutional network to fit those needs. So we're happy. We, we continue to provide not only cable, but high speed internet and telephone to the citizens of Needham in competition with both Comcast and Verizon, which is no small challenge. And we, we think we have reached agreement after negotiations working with Bill August and with, with you as a board. And we look forward to any questions that you have or anything that I can help with as we seek to renew for another ten year period and go forward, serving the town and the citizens of Needham. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And I do see Attorney August here with us via Zoom. And Attorney August, I was going to go through the seventy-three pages, page by page tonight, but I see that since you're here, could you please just give us a summary of this document? And we'll go from there.
Yes, thank you. The renewal license is, is you, is based on the existing expiring license. It's, it's about ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent identical to the license that RCN has been operating under for the past ten years. We use the existing license as the template to update it in terms of the, the dates and this, and the scheduling. The substantial and most material terms are literally identical. So it made our job easier. That does not happen at Comcast, during Comcast and Verizon renewals, where they retool and revise everything based on, they're changing positions on a lot of the legal requirements. RCN has been a very good negotiations partner by agreeing to the continuity. For example, under the existing license, in addition to being continuity, it's also an extremely strong license on the merits. That's why continuity in and of itself is not our objective. Our objective is to have a great license for the Town of Needham. And we know from experience, the existing license is a great license. For example, it provides annual funding to the town for the Needham Community Television, Public Educational and Governmental Access Channels, Studio Equipment, at five percent of gross annual revenues, five percent of RCN's gross annual revenues. That is the maximum, five percent permitted under the Federal Cable Act. So we could not do any better than that. We have, as Tom Steele of RCN emphasized, a partnership with, not in the legal sense, but in terms of cooperation and working together, a partnership, in terms of RCN's managing an institutional network, interconnecting the town's municipal buildings and schools. And, you know, we checked in closely with your IT department and facilities people, and they love that institutional network. They're totally satisfied with it. It provides the data connectivity. It's extremely competitive because it's provided pursuant to the license rather than being purchased at market rates. So that's a great thing. And that continues, as is, with some updating of the sites to make it reflect the current map, the route. That is above and beyond what Verizon and Comcast provide. They do not agree to INET connectivity for data purposes. So you can feel very confident, truly, very comfortable about the annual funding for PEG access, the continuity of the INET is informed by consultation, not just with, everything, I, you know, engaged in consultation with town manager Fitzpatrick and with Miles Tucker, so that they could have the IT people in the loop, and Mark from Needham Community TV, both of whom, Needham Community TV and your IT people have vetted and reviewed the verbiage on all these points we're discussing. This was not negotiated by council and then brought to a hearing. This was a, a lot of teamwork. And I can't thank the manager Fitzpatrick and her assistant Miles enough. Because as you can imagine, when you're updating a license, even though it's substantially the same, there are a lot of things to verify, whether they're still applicable, or whether they need a slight tweak. And the manager and, and Miles at every turn, like brought in the people from the town who had knowledge on the specific questions and verified everything in the license. And they're extremely responsive to this process and helpful. In addition to the annual funding and the institutional network continuity, there's continuity in terms of the equipment funding for the local channels and studio. The same amount that is provided for in the existing license as an equipment grant, above and beyond the annual five percent, is provided for in this license. And that is a very impressive thing in light of the fact that all of the companies are actually experiencing a decline in their subscriber count due to cord cutting and people switching to streaming from cable. So even though there's a decreased subscriber base, there's level funding in terms of the equipment. One further footnote on the INET continuity and RCN's reference to it being a partnership with the town, because I've known Tom Steele for many, many years. And I know he's getting to the point where he's thinking about other opportunities, truly, you know, after cable. And I just, as testimony or gratefulness to RCN, they do, he deserves credit for being willing to allocate staff to regularly work with the towns to make these INETS work. It takes a lot of work, and it takes a lot of interest in the cable company and support by the cable company for the Massachusetts municipalities where RCN. So I, thank you, Tom Steele and RCN. I think it's a very impressive contribution. And with this pandemic, where we see that it's not just important, but connectivity, it goes beyond this really kind of our lifeline. I think that that contribution you have made is a legacy. You've given a lot of municipalities connectivity they need to succeed and function. So thank you, RCN and Tom Steele. It's a great contribution.
Attorney, with that, thank you very much for that presentation and summarizing. And I also do want to thank Mrs. Patrick and Miles as well. I just want to move this on because this is a public hearing. Appreciate all your hard work.
Right.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience or on Zoom who wishes to speak? And if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature so that we can see it. Seeing and hearing none. I'll close that portion of public comment for this public hearing.
It's good that you moved on because I would have kept going for another twenty minutes. So.
No, we just have a tight agenda, but that's.
That's my weak spot. Okay.
Yes. You were so convincing that we had no one from the audience who wished to speak. So I.
Right. And I provided a comprehensive memo explaining the continuity.
You did. You did. Thank you. Is there anyone here from the board who wishes to have questions?
I'd offer the motion and then speak to it.
Yes, please do. Yes.
I'd offer the motion that the board make a finding that the cable franchise renewal proposed by the Barcian Telecom Services of Massachusetts LLC reasonably meets the franchise and cable-related renewal needs and interests of the public and town, and finding that RCN's financial and technical qualifications and local programming channels, facilities, and services are reasonable to meet the town cable franchise needs. Move that the Select Board as issuing authority for the town vote to accept the renewal agreement with RCN Telecom Services of Massachusetts LLC effective July tenth, two thousand and twenty-two and execute renewal paperwork.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion, a second discussion. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, it's helpful to have the presentation, as well as the full documentation of the renewal agreement and the memo that, that Mr. Attorney August just referred to, that really says, although it's ninety-seven percent the same, and mainly keeping a lot of good things that we've got, there are a few adjustments, and he's noted those in the materials that he gave to us. Needham is very fortunate in that we actually have three cable television franchises here. And at the time that all this started with just some, you know, you could buy the combo package of both television and telephone, wired telephone for yourself with, with the first franchisee that came to town, and the businesses involved a lot. This is a legally required proceeding. The related, it is very complicated to have a competitive environment with three people that are entities that are competing privately, but that also have to meet qualifications somewhat similar to a public utility in dealing with town. It's been, as has been said, it's been an excellent relationship. The citizens of the town are well served to have all three companies here. This is the first of three agreements to come in for approval. And, and it's a good piece of work that I would recommend approving. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any further discussion? No, seeing and hearing none. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Sorry, yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is unanimous. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Great night.
Have a good night, all.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, a public hearing, EverSource Grant of Location, six hundred and thirty-one South Street. We have Jaclyn Duffy, the EverSource representative via Zoom. And we'll wait a moment for her to come over.
Hi, how are you tonight? Hi, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but I'm assuming you cannot hear me. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Oh, we're good. Okay, great. Here we are.
How are you tonight?
Ms. Duffy, you're here on a couple of petitions. Why don't we start with the first one, which is the Grant of Location for six thirty-one South Street? The floor is yours.
Yes, we, Nstar Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, would like to install approximately eight feet of conduit in South Street. The reason for this work is to provide electric service to six thirty-one South Street.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Duffy. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone, a member of the public, either Zoom or in person, who wishes to comment or speak on this application? Seeing and hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'd offer the motion that Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately eight feet of conduit in South Street. And then I'd like to be heard if there's a second.
Yes, Mr. Matthews, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second, then.
Motion and second. Mr. Matthews?
I just wanted to ask the town manager, there are some basic, there are some documentary and background requirements and paperwork that's provided. Are those all in order as far as the town?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. I'm satisfied.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. We come to the vote. Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Duffy. Next application, four hundred and seventy-five Hillside Avenue. The floor is again yours when you return your.
My back?
You are back. Okay. Did you hear what I said, four seventy-five?
I did. I did. I don't know what's wrong with my video, but it's not working tonight. We'd like to install twelve feet of conduit on Hillside Avenue. This is for Nstar Electric, DBA EverSource Energy. The reason for this work is to provide electric service for a new electric vehicle charging station at four seventy-five Hillside Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy and Mrs. Patrick. Everything is in order in this application as well. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in person or on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? Yes. Yeah, oh, come, right, Jean, Ms. McKnight? How are you this evening?
I'm very well, thank you.
Very nice to see you. We can speak right into the microphone. Yes.
I am in a butter to this project. You got notice of it.
I am in a butter to this project. You got notice of it. I live at 100 Rosemary Way, the Rosemary Ridge condominium. And I just have one question. I think this is wonderful to encourage the installation of electric charging stations. I know this will be on private property, a small office building there on Hillside Avenue. In such a situation, is the electric charging station available to the general public for use? Or is it exclusively for private use of the tenants or owners of that property?
Okay. And Jean McKnight, right, I just, I want to state your name, right? I said it, but I know. Great. Jean McKnight. Thank you, Ms. McKnight. I don't know if we have that answer through Ever Source because I know you're responsible for getting the power to the property, but in that application, was that provided to you, Ms. Duffy?
No, it was not provided. So I will not know if it's open to the public or if it's for the private, for 475 Hillside. I could have someone get back to you on that, but I do not know have the answer tonight.
Right. And it's my understanding, because we haven't received any notice, that it would be for a private enterprise. But I think we can find, confirm that information and get that back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd be just curious, but I certainly don't want to hold up the proceeding in order to get the answer. Go ahead with whatever your vote would be.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none. Is there a motion?
I'd offer the motion that the select board approve and sign a petition from Ever Source Energy to install approximately 12 feet of conduit in Hillside Avenue. And then I'd like to be heard if there's a second.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, I just, my understanding is that the town manager can get the answer to that, the question about the use of the charging station. The charging station is actually not part of the hearing, which is simply under, our role in this is the question of whether the company should be allowed to bury the wire to leading to the facility in the public way. The most common one is just like the one that we had in the proceeding hearing where there's a wire, there's an underground connection to a private home. It's only the part of the of the run that's under the public way that is the subject of the hearing. But I think the question is one that a lot of people are going to ask, particularly if there are more and more of these charging stations around town. And I'm not, no doubt that some are going to be private and some are going to be public. So the manager can get that information, then let you know that would be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And yes, we will get that answer moving forward. Is there any other questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is unanimous. Ms. Duffy, thank you very much for your presentations. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. And I will have someone get back to you regarding that.
Great.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
You too.
You as well. Next item on the agenda, joint meeting with Park and Recreation Commission. I see a full contingent of Park and Rec here, so I invite you up to the table for our joint meeting. Welcome.
Hello.
Nice to see. Great. Just wanted to make sure I can see Mary Ann, which I can. So thank you for coming in. We have an agenda here with numerous items, but I first want to thank you for being such great partners with the town in moving forward projects that have been just terrific for our residents. And I know we've had quite a few of them that have been priorities that we've gone to town meeting. And I just think it's been a terrific partnership for the two boards. So I don't know, Ms. Chastain as chair, if you have any initial comments before we begin?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us in. We appreciate the partnership and we look forward to working with you as always on our projects. Do you know all of our?
Why don't you introduce? That's perfect.
Okay, so you know Chris Gerstle?
Vice Chair of the Commission.
Dean Hanigan? Our newest member. Do you know Stacy Fabian DeRulo? And I think Kristen Wright is in the audience.
Hi, Kristen. Great. And you know us, Matt Barelli, Chair, Dan Matthews, Marcus Nelson.
How are you?
Clerk and Mary Ann Cooley, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have several things we'd like to talk about. We just like to be sure that we're on the same page with our goals and your goals and that we have some of the similar priorities. They don't have to be exactly the same, but we'd like to know that you're in sync with us and we're in sync with you folks.
Terrific.
And quite often I'm going to turn to our director, Stacy Mulroy, because she has most of the answers, if not all the answers. So so maybe we could start with talking about capital projects. On our list, we have a boat launch project, which is underway. I think you folks know about that, but it is a boat launch on South Street. Right now there is a boat launch there. It is a, it's a kind of a dirt driveway where three or four cars can park. And then there is a dirt ramp coming down into the river and the project is to level it, make three to four spaces, parking spaces that would be gravel, stoned us type of thing. And then we would put in a slab so that it would make it easier for people to back a small trailer down that ramp. And that's designed for non-motorized vehicles, canoes, kayaks, rowboats, that kind of thing. That is in the works and we are currently going to be presenting before the Conservation Commission, I believe in early December for the design. So once you get the approval, we'll go forward with that. And then the next step would be construction, assuming that we get those approvals. Claxton Field. I don't know if you'd like to talk to this, Stacy. That's a redo of that softball space. That project is underway. We are hoping to get it designed so that it could go to town meeting in the spring for construction funding. It's a very tight timeline. We're not sure we're going to make that, but we are working and town staff has been working diligently on that one. Anything to add on that, Stacy or?
Well, we're currently waiting on the contractor for some designs and drawings. Thirdly, the Defazio Track, which we, was a resurfacing of that track. It is finished. It is open. I hope you get a chance to go down there. It looks great. We were a little bit at the mercy of the contractor for the timing. Once they, they told us when they had time, when it worked in their schedule, they would let us know. They couldn't give us a firm date. So we had, I think, about three days' notice to shut the track down. And but it was a pretty quick project. So it is now back open and it looks terrific. So I hope if you haven't been up there, you get a chance to go there.
Great. And before we move on to the other items, I do want to just talk about those three items, boat launch, Claxton, and if anyone has comments on the Defazio Track, that would be nice here from our side. But is there any comments or questions on those three items from our board? I will just, yes, Marcus?
Yes, welcome everyone. On the Claxton project, I know Kate talked about it in the last update that we had as far as, you know, so we're waiting on the possible design and trying to get it for this upcoming town meeting. And did they say ballpark when that might be available? I know it's a tight timeline, like Cindy said, so just wondering, you know, how close we are to that and as far as the timeline is concerned, is it more possible, probable that we would get it in time? Or is it not looking that way? Just kind of, I'm just asking to be exact.
That's a great question.
Yeah.
Right now we're waiting on some of the borings from Weston Sampson to get some samples of where we can put the lighting.
Okay.
And we're working with D W Director Karis Lustig, who has been in contact with Weston Sampson. So we're just waiting to hear back from them.
Okay.
I know she was going to reach out to them late last week. And so we're just waiting on those to find out when we, if we can hit the deadlines that we need.
All right. Saying apemiscit then.
Great. Thank you, Marcus. And yes, I know that Claxton project was one, I think COVID had something to do with the delay and it's been tough going through. And we appreciate the flexibility to try to move this ahead because I know it's been a priority to a lot of citizens, as you know, to get the Claxton Field developed and the schedule that we anticipated. But I know there are things that can come up, that can move that. As far as the boat launch, you know, we went to town meeting with that project and strongly supported. And I think it's a joint goal of ours is to get access to water for our residents. And that was spelled out at town meeting as well. And I've had discussions on this as far as the impact. And it's my understanding that when we do this, it'll actually have a less of environmental impact than what is currently there. And I know we're going to go before Concom with that. I know it's a goal of, you know, your board, our board, I think in the Conservation Committee, to find access to water. I think this part of the Charles you can't get to from any other launch along that river. So I just think it's a terrific project and great for our citizens to be able to get to a place where you can already look down and see that it should be possible to get there. So I will be joining you at the Conservation Commission discussion with that information. Great. Okay. And yes, Mr. Matthews.
I'm glad to hear the track is open, not only looks good. That means like I'll actually go down and walk around it. The, just to echo or pick up on what you said at the beginning, I mean, it's our goal, as I understand, to be on the same page as your committee on these projects. And this stuff is very, gets complicated between the designing and the capital and the appropriations and then the COVID interruptions and the supply chain issues and everything else. But if there are problems and things get out of sync, then maybe we can't always do what we want. But I know that Stacy can always get in touch with Kate and the information can get to the boards. We'll figure out what to do because yeah, it's, I want to be on the same page. And I think I speak for everybody on our side of the table when I say that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. We appreciate that. And we noticed, I'm sure you noticed too, that during COVID, recreation became so much more important and outdoor space became so much more important. We never had as much demand for our parks and our fields as we did once COVID hit because that was what people could do. They could go outside. So we had requests for use of our facilities, our outdoor facilities that were incredible. So while it was heartwarming to us, it has also made it a little more difficult to schedule things and to meet all the demands. But being park and recreation, we were okay with that. We're glad that people see the importance of the outdoor space that we have.
Correct. Terrific. Pickleball courts at Mills.
So our staff has put pickleball tape lines down on the basketball court at Mills. That's pretty recent, within the last couple of days.
Right.
It's a pilot program. So at this point you have to bring your own net. I believe we will at some point get a net and get paddles or at least get a net, but you would have to bring your own net and go up there and try it. Our hope is that if it works out and people enjoy it, that we can put some more lines somewhere else. Unfortunately, the best place to put them, since we don't have a dedicated pickleball court, would be tennis courts. And once COVID hit tennis, which had seemed to be a sport that was not quite as robust, has become very robust. So we will now have two sports perhaps vying for some of those, that tennis space. So we'll have to figure that out. But Stacy and our staff have some ideas about timing and figure out how that space can be used cooperatively by two groups. But it is a pilot program. We think there is a lot of interest. That's what we're hearing and we're hearing from pickleball people. So it's already out on Facebook tonight. We see that there's a group plenty to go up, I think, Saturday morning.
How terrific.
Beginning pickleball is what they called it, or intro to pickleball. So so we're excited about that. We'll see how this tape works. It's down on that basketball court. So hopefully it appears.
Stays down.
It's a pilot.
Yes, it's a pilot.
Just to know, we do have actually pickleball sets for people to rent from the department so that you can try them out before you go ahead and buy. So Chairman Barelli, I expect to see you down there Saturday.
As long as Vice Chair Gerstle's there, I'll be there. Thank you. Any, any discussion on this item? I know, Ms. Cooley, you're a, you're a player.
I can't actually say that I'm much of a player, but I have friends who are heavy duty. And I would hope to have more time to play in the future. I'm very excited to have a court here.
Terrific. Okay. Next item.
Next item we have. So in our budget, we have asked for an outdoor facility specialist. So just want to let you know how important that is. Just we used to call it a park ranger, but it's, it's been, the description has been elevated to outdoor facility specialist. But we think it's really important to have someone, a person dedicated to keeping track of what's going on at our outdoor facility. So as you know, we've had trash issues. We've had vandalism issues. We think if we have a person who is dedicated to going to the facilities, reporting what's happening. If we need a police presence, they could, you know, they could make sure that happens or try to make that happen. And it's in our budget request. We really feel strongly, this is an important position. We think we could perhaps share this person with, with other budgets if they'd be willing to do that. But there are just a lot of responsibilities that we think this person could have. And we have floated the idea of a park ranger, I think, for quite a number of years. But now again, I think it's because the increased use of our facilities, but we, we feel it would be really important to have this person. So I would just like to point that out too. We know you've seen it in our budget and hopefully you will support it. And we'll see where it goes from there. And I don't know if you'd like to add anything, Stacy, about that.
No, just with the, with the increased usage of all of our facilities, you know, there's just a lot more people out there. There's a lot more trash. There's a lot more things that need to be repaired and maintained. So this, there is no one person or one department that handles that right now. And this position could fit take care of many of those issues, trash, maintenance, any fixes, permitting, and just being literally our eyes on the fields and be able to report back.
Great. I think I wholeheartedly support that. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah. Hypothetically, what would be days of the week that they possibly work in the hours? Because when I think about if it's getting later in the day, not having someone with them for support, if there is a police presence or something needed for their safety.
Right. So we're actually requesting two of these positions because with the large amount of facilities, fields and.
Lot of ground.
Yeah, there's a lot to cover. So ideally it would be a sort of second shift or midday to early evening type of position. And we would hopefully if we got to be able to stagger that over the weekends as well.
So it'll be seven days a week, basically.
Ideally, yes.
Because the biggest, not the most headaches we have, but the weekends. And I know that is, that is where it's most prevalent. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Matthews?
Just, just one thing that's kind of related. Sometimes I, you know, I I hear the kind of kids today thing about, you know, problems with trash and and worse at some of the fields. And I think the thing for me is it's not kids, it's in specific individuals that produce stuff that they should know better about. And I think the ranger program may part of a thing where we have some people who need to be held accountable for their behavior. And I think if we do that, that will, I've been in lots of meetings where people complain about large groups of people creating a problem. It's not large groups of people. It's, it's individuals. And we just, we do have to have some identification and enforcement and do things the right way. And I think once that happens, it'll be a lot better.
Thank you. And Ms. Cooley?
I was just going to mention, I do think, you know, this question of the trash is really problematic. I know that the commission has been worried about it for quite some time. To me, it's a question that I think all of our citizens need to consider because you know, the issue is we are now looking at spending taxpayer dollars to cover enforcement of picking up trash. And I think the question that people need to think about is that where they want to be spending their taxpayer dollars? Or would they prefer to see it on a more value added basis? And, you know, from that perspective, it's really if we can have carry in, carry out, then we don't have to be doing this. But, you know, if we need to do this, this is maybe what has to happen.
Thanks, Ms. Cooley.
And I want to just be, you know, clear, these positions, if they are funded, won't take care of the trash problem entirely. There's a very large stomach problem, you know, from the schools to the towns all the way. You know, from the schools to the towns all the way through and in our surrounding areas. So this will certainly help alleviate a lot of the issues, but it won't make the trash issue go away.
Right. And I I do think it's a step in the right direction. When you look at the field, you come to the fields, there's nothing. That takes away from Eddie's work and other people's work than seeing trash on the fields. And I think if there's a one way, it's very multifaceted to take care of this issue, but. To have someone observe these fields, like you talked about, maybe repair, report a playground or, you know, a broad. Way of of looking at these issues, I think would be smart. And I guess my question is, and I I've heard us, you know, the tennis courts, for example. You need, you're supposed to get a badge to play on the courts. I've been up there quite a bit and there are people lessons. I don't know if lessons are even allowed, but private lessons, but they're not, right? And you have private lessons and you have people who probably don't have badges or because there's so many people and I maybe could compare them, but. Would this person also maybe be in charge of saying, hey, do you have a, I know they used to do that back, back in the day, right? Just to go around, but I think that would be also helpful to, you know, these private lessons and also just make sure people are complying with the rules.
So yes, one of the duties on the, for this position would be to check tennis badges, permits, and also permits of the field users. But you know, is is this group of people supposed to be on this field at this time? Or is this supposed to be open for passive recreation? So they'll be doing that in addition to maintaining repairing. So like I said. Just very much eyes on our fields and facilities.
Terrific. Great. Next item, bathroom access.
So bathrooms have been a hot topic this year at playgrounds and fields. Our our director has recommended that we put portable set a number of places. And so we have tried to do that. Of course, we have permanent facilities at De Fazio and. Claxton and Mills. We've, we have now actually closed, I believe, the facilities for this season, right? They've been closed. They've been winterized. So we'll have portable set for the rest of the sports season. So this is a priority for us. It's not our top priority. We understand the need for for access to these facilities at at fields and playgrounds. It's it's a very expensive proposition. It's expensive to build permanent facilities and then try to maintain them. There are plumbing issues that vandalism is is very high. It's hard to get. Service to get them cleaned. You know, there's a lot of issues. So. We haven't made this decision, but I think our director is is leaning towards more portables and not building more of the permanent facilities. Again, probably not at every every park, not at every every playground, but at the big ones, at the heavily trafficked ones. But that that's where we're leaning. We so we have to determine whether that where that goes in the budget. You know, is it a capital item to do permanent ones? Or is it an operating item to do these portables year after year? But with the vandalism and the and the cleaning issue, I'm not sure that we should embark on a program to build more permanent facilities. Nobody loves the portables. There is no question most are not ideal. On the other hand, they are nicer than they used to be, is what I've been told. So. We all try to avoid them. But that's where we're leaning. I don't know what what your board thinks, what you folks think and. And what you think the community wants and what the community is willing to pay for. And that's something we'll need to explore.
Okay. Discussion?
And I I think we'd look to you guys to, but it would certainly seem at least intuitively. That the fixed permanent facilities, you can't use them year round. They have all, they're high cost. They have all the problems. That you're describing. And there are times when you can't have them open when there might be users on the field because of all of the other issues. So the portables. Seem to, you know, give you at least some, you know, they give you the service, they give you, you know, a service that meets the need and they're the lower cost. Lower maintenance option. So.
And I just think about, you know, not having the resources to operate those from within house 24 hour days, seven days a week. Having the porta potty is better than, you know, not having anything. So to be able to use that at any moment for any event that they're having and people are renting out the space. I think that is going to be probably the solution that I would push for just because. You know, not knowing what we have to pay for those and that people want to pay for them and we're not keeping them clean and we have to continue to update permanent facilities. Then we're going to be wasting money. And then, you know, yeah, I just think having the opportunity to be able to use those all the time makes a difference. And then there's always going to be something there for someone to be able to use and not have to run into the YMCA or not be able to go anywhere. We are human if something's closed. Whether it may, whatever it may be. So for right now, that makes more sense to me.
Thanks, Marcus. I will say anecdotally, I think Memorial Park Building, right? And you look at that when it was under construction, we had porta potties there. And with flag football, Chris and I and Marcus was there as well. And, you know, people just use those porta potties and it was fine that we never received a complaint. And then with Memorial Park, we love the building. I wouldn't change anything about it. We've had had some instances of vandalism in the bathroom. We're now looking to see how you can regulate getting in and out of those bathrooms on a time schedule. And the worst thing they can have to a porta potty is what maybe someone pushes it over and then you have then someone come out and clean it. So I think practically. The porta potty would be the solution and kind of, you know, it's hard some of these sites to get even plumbing to them. So and water. So I think. That's a good solution. It would it would help satisfy the need. So it's good thinking. Yeah. Great. Skate park.
Oh, the skate park. Any any commissions? Would you like to talk about skate park?
One thing I would say about the skate park is the parking wreck school is always looking for new activities or ways that we can change things up. That's always good to have your reliable programs that you go through. There are consistent programs that people like coming back for. But one of our other objectives is also to look for new and exciting ways that we can bring a better. Item to the town, a new thing that's hot and that's out there and people are going to use. So something like a skate park is that one of the goals of the commission is also to listen to the people. That we've had multiple people come to our meetings talking about the use or the request for one. And we definitely want to look into it because when you have a good group of people that are out there and it's going to be something that's going to be there for ages to come. We want to see what we can do of giving back to the community. So something like this, we are heavily looking into the options. And when we do it, we want to do it right. We just don't want to do it for the sake of doing it. We want to make sure we have adequate space and facility to do this at.
Great. And I know we've been discussing that for a number of years. I remember I went to the one in Framingham. There's a nice one in Boston. And of course, it's all. Scale and scope, maybe for Needham might be different, but it was a good amenity for those towns. How was the one currently near the the library, across the library? Is that being utilized, that pop up?
Yeah, that we have a pop up park in half of that lot right now. And I can say at least weekly, if not more, the equipment's being moved around. So it's being used very frequently and. Whoever's using that is, you know, changing it up for the other users. So.
And you can use bikes on those as well. BMX bikes are popular.
Yes, the new term for skate park is action sports park. So that's all inclusive. Skateboards and line skates, bikes, and now scooters are big.
Yes.
You can bring your scooter.
So so the issues for skate park are clearly the location. We have our small one now, but that's a parking lot and we need that parking desperately once we get to full season. So location and then cost, the cost of insurance. I don't, the cost to build it. I I don't know what it is. We have some ideas depending upon what you build, but. We would need insurance and that's we've been told. Outside of our regular insurance, I would have to think about that. But location, as always, right? We need a spot. We need space. Could we put it at at an existing field? Maybe. I mean, we know that land is always at a premium. So but there is quite a large group of skate enthusiasts, right? So we are hearing from them, particularly to share. They have been. Vocal and attending our meetings and it's in, while everyone, every age, I guess, maybe not real little people, but. It hits an age group that we really like to hit, those teenagers, the young teens, the mid teens, the, you know, that's a group that we lose a lot of times in. Swim programs and in our park and recreation programs. And that's the group that I think we would love to be able to offer some some facilities to. So we we're excited about it. I don't know where it's going to go. I think we need to be careful and set the expectations for these enthusiasts that it, you know. This this kind of project takes a lot of time.
Yes.
Not to mention money, but a lot of time. But but we think it's coming down the down the pike.
To build a Needham sized skate park, if you, once you had, if you had a location. What are we talking about?
For a cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know the cost off the top of my head, but I can get you some basic numbers. We're looking for, I I don't know that one.
That's fine.
But I can certainly, but we're looking at between 10 and 20,000 square feet for a community this size.
Okay. But that would be okay. Yeah, it would be interesting to see what the numbers would be for something like that. I would agree that that location is the big issue because you want it, we're presuming that a lot of the the big part of the users are not. Motor vehicle operators. And so it needs to be in an accessible part of town for them. The location of the pop up park now is great. I do see people using it, but not as many as I would expect based on my understanding of the interest, you know, that's been expressed in the community. So maybe. Is there a need for some more promotion or or information getting out about?
We can, I think there's two reasons. One, we can certainly push it out. The equipment is not ideal.
No, it's pretty.
It is a, it's it's very basic. It's something that somebody could even put in their driveway.
Yeah.
It was getting significantly more used when it was down at Pollard. Because it, you know, is a direct hit on that age group. So it wasn't being used much more there.
Well, maybe that's whether you move it around, you find the place.
And then Marcus, go ahead.
Yeah. So like Stacy just mentioned, when it was down at the Pollard location, I was there quite frequently, not at the skate park, but at the field. This fall. And every time I was there, there was at least a handful of of people there, four to five, sometimes more than that, using that. Part of the facility. And every time I've driven by the Rosemary location, it seems to be you utilized a lot. But for sure, when it was in a different space. That was a little, I don't know if it was considered more space when it was at Pollard, but a different kind of space. It was being used quite a quite a bit.
Marcus?
Yeah, I would say, you know, location aside, Pollard is probably going to get more use than it is over at Roseman. And, you know, and I think that's, you know, all things being said. And what Dan said. And I don't think it needs more publicity or more of a push. I just think the equipment and what they have is, you know, very much a pilot, you know, kind of like we're thinking about with the pickleball. That it's not the best equipment in the world, but it's something that they're trying to do. And I think if we do land on a space. Or have, you know, a long term plan for that, I think it's going to go through the roof. I'm all in for that. And I know. People try that at a younger age, something like skating and biking and using scooters. But if you don't have the right, you know, kind of things to attract people, it's not, doesn't matter where it is, it matters kind of what's there. And then I think that use will come. I don't think it would be, you know, burnt tax dollars or burnt money trying to get that done. There's a big contingency that would love to do that. And for those that don't love, you know, playing sports and things like that, that is an amazing alternative to get people moving, to get people outside and get kids active. So it's going to have so many, so much more of a benefit to have something like that in our town than not. But location obviously is going to be a factor. I think it'll fly once it's in service, you know, however many years it takes to get that done, to let people know we take it serious and it's something that we want and that we're going to try to make happen. I think it would make this a lot of people in this town really happy. And.
Right. And I completely agree. I know we spoke about this, I don't know, two or three years ago. And I've been to a, my son listened to a lot of these parks. And what you notice is people come together because they have the same interests and they just meet there and they say, hey, how's it going? And it's great kids that don't know each other. They interact and and it's just a wonderful thing to see. I would look at the Framingham model because I know that. When it was a town, their board had a committee similar to how we did with the rail trail. And they had a skate park committee. What is it? Active? Committee, whatever this would be called.
Action sports.
Action sports committee. And then they were able to, very similar to the rail trail, get private money and and group money raised. And collaborate. And I I forget the amount that they did have to come up with. But at the end of the day, it looks like a large, you know, in-ground swimming pool, let's say, right? With, of course, not the water. And it's it's just terrific. You have bikes and everything else going. So I just think it's something that you could get. A group or committee together so we can discuss with you and then maybe have some private, these groups do want to contribute to the to the cost of it. So.
I can say that the Framingham Park, which is about 10,000 square feet, five years ago was roughly $350,000.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Okay. Any other items for?
Since you sangway, give me a little segue here into the pool, just to give you a heads up, even though it's November. We are already thinking about a subject that's near and dear. I know that Dan Matthew started, and that is lifeguards. And we are, you know, we, of course, we always try to recruit our lifeguards from the previous year to come back the next year. But just to put you on alert, it doesn't look like it's getting easier to get lifeguards. We would love to be fully staffed so that if, assuming COVID is gone or reduced, we could open full time. Because right now it looks like our pool hours will be. Based upon our staffing, not upon COVID, not upon anything to do with the facility, but it will be based on staffing. So I just want to just give you a heads up to be thinking about that. I'm sure you're seeing it in other.
It's a national.
You know, right, everywhere and you're seeing. People to be hired in across all town departments. But. Lifeguards were always hard to get. And it looks like they're becoming more difficult. And the the salaries that are being paid at places like Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks. Are very competitive and perhaps the work is a little bit easier, I don't know, than being a lifeguard. But we are very concerned about being able to staff up this summer.
Last year, there was really a short, like a national shortage of trained people. Is are we still in that situation? Or is it?
Yeah, we continue to be in that situation because there just aren't as many people that can teach the courses and there's less and less. People wanting to take the courses.
And if it did have to go to that other model, that would be by reservation. Is that how the hours would go? Or would it still be open just for a limited amount of time? Do not know.
We haven't made that determination yet. I mean, we tried. We started to talk about the price of passes and and daily fees for next year and that. And we've done that is if we are going to be fully open and able to fully service the town. But we are aware that that may have to change if we go to time slots. But if we are that limited in staff, it may go back to time slots. But. We would prefer to not have to do that, obviously. But I just want you to be aware, even though it is November, that is. We don't know that this is going to be any better as we get into March and April.
Thank you for that update. Anything further? Anything further from this board? No? All right. Thank you for coming in. These conferences are terrific and aligning our goals.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the consent agenda.
I would. Thank you. I you saw my long pause. Thanks, Ms. Cooley. Is there a second? Any discussion? Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you for that motion. Next item on the agenda, community preservation plan update. And I see members here of CPC. And I also see the chair, Spinder Shore. How are you? Good evening. Mr. Zimbone. And I believe you might have a couple on attendees on. Zoom. Yes, I see that. And Ms. McKnight. Welcome. Nice to see you. Great. And I will turn the floor over to you for your presentation.
Of my visit tonight is a follow up to the email that I had sent to you to the select board and other stakeholders in August of 2021. I usually appear here in March of each year. Prior to town meeting as part of the process of of conferring with the finance committee, the select board and having a public hearing regarding CPC applications that are before us. And during that presentation, I usually get some kind of a detailed state of the CPC and a description of the funding mechanism because it's kind of confusing. But I'll, I'm going to save that for once a year.
Yeah.
For for my March presentation. But I will, just to set the table. That I'll identify myself. I'm Peter Bingetor. I'm the chair of the CPC. The the Community Preservation Act, I want to say a couple of sentences about it. It's a funding mechanism for participating towns. To award grants to applicants to support affordable or community housing, preservation or restoration. preservation or restoration of historic resources, acquisition and preservation of open space, and restoration and investment in recreational resources. Now, when Needham adopted the CPA in 2004, as part of the act, we developed a community preservation plan. The plan was first enacted in October of 2005, and we had some subsequent amendments in 2006. And our last amendment, if you bear with me, we had another amendment in 2010, and our, and our plan was last amended in 2014. So that's some seven years ago. The, the substance of my email was essentially that the plan itself, with respect to each of the constituent groups, open space, affordable housing, preservation of historic resources, and restoration and investment in recreational resources. The plan has a statement of need and then goals or a statement of need and then goals for each of those constituent groups. The statement of need is basically data-driven. So if you, if, I'll give you an example, which is if you look at our housing statement of need, one of the, one of the goals is for Needham to comply with the 10% requirement under 40B. So we've met that goal. So there, there are some goals that are kind of a little outdated. We have some data that's dealing with changes in population between 1990 and 2000. So I think that what we need for each of the constituent groups is to refresh the data and have basically a data-driven basis for what their needs are, and then a reassessment of what their needs are. I think that it really kind of came up in the context of, in our last funding cycle. There were a number of requests. Most of it actually, some of it kind of coming about as a result of the Emory Grover request for some $12 million, which kind of forced us to kind of take a look at our, our financial plan and see where we were going and what the needs were. And we, we identified a, you know, fair number of, of projects that were on our, our capital plan. But many of them didn't have a number attached to them, probably because we didn't know what the number was. But we, but at that point, I think in order for us as a committee to really act as kind of adjudicators for the, for these applications, it's, we need to have some updated and refreshed guidance from those particular stakeholders of what it is that you want. And frankly, you know, if I were to summarize my question, it would be, what is it that the town wants? But what are its priorities at this point with respect to CPC? And what I anticipate is that I'll be making similar kind of presentation or request to each of the individual boards that represent constituent groups and ask that same question. Now concurrent with this, we're coming into our funding cycle too. So we're, and it's going to be busy. There's a lot going on and you know that probably better than I do. But the applications come in in December. We have a nine-person committee. We usually staff each application with two committee members who are responsible for conducting due diligence. And we're in a cycle. We're getting ready for the May meeting. But between December and March, we're busy with assessing grant requests. I don't know if we're going to be able to drive this issue forward, but I would like to at least get some sense of where we're going as a town with respect to the expenditures on CPC concurrent with some of these big things that I anticipate coming up in this funding cycle. So that's my request. I, I don't know how the process began. I think that in the past, my, my, what I've been informed is that chairs of the CPC said basically, you have a deadline by X to provide us with this kind of information. And we're moving forward with the amendment to the plan. That's probably, we'll, we'll get there, but we're just beginning the process.
Sure.
So I guess at that point, at this point, I'm, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Okay. And I will just say to lead it off, I want to thank your committee. I look at the projects in town that would not have been possible. And I'll look at this town hall, right, without support from your committee and funds. So it is just so, now that we've, you know, you look at this plan and you're right, we have moved kind of in to a different phase where I think housing is now on the front burner for a lot of people. I will tell you my priority. I think after the, the town vote, a town meeting vote for Emory Grover being so overwhelming, I would like to see if there is more funding available for that project. If there somehow, you know, would be that funding. And I know that's a discussion for the group. But when you look at the vote and the push for that building into renovated, I would like to see if that is a possibility. But I think it's something that we have to discuss and realign where we want to be. Because you have, you could call them competing funds, but that's what they are with these different projects. I do want to recognize Mr. Crocker here, a member of the, he just popped up, member of the CPC discussion.
Yeah.
Mr. Matthews?
I, I appreciate you giving us the document. Very helpful. And, and I think it's appropriate to update the plan for the reasons you've stated. And I think in reading through it, it's, it's, it's really important to have a plan to give your committee some guidance because you've got diverse points of view coming to the table. And particularly now that the statute has been expanded to allow a wider range of uses than what's true in the past. And that, you know, and it was good to get a lot of that. It helped do a lot of parks projects. But it really means that you're very likely to have much more in the way of demand or in applications than you have in funding, or at least more. And you've got, you had to have some standards to parse it out. So I think it's good to take a look at it and update it. I think for me, as I read through the, the standards, one thing that's there, it's, it's in there, but it's not called out as loudly, as clearly as I think it ought to be. Which is that one of the reasons that the voters approved raising their own taxes to join this program to begin with was the idea that you would get some state funding to help match town tax dollars for some core things that we needed to get to, that we weren't going to get other outside assistance for. And the first of those projects was this building, the, the town hall, which qualified, because when you can qualify a project as one of the, that's the town needs to do for a basic function of its operations, which was true when you qual, when you qualified the town hall for historic contribution. That's really a value add for, for the, for the town, and it helps us meet obligations that we, that we have. I think in Emory Grover, that's a second instance of the same, of the same kind of thing. We're getting, we've made the decision to keep and improve an historic building. It comes at a higher per, per, per square foot cost than new, than a new building would. But it meets a core function, school administration of the town government. It qualifies for the historic contribution. So as you're, as you're weighing these things out, I would like to see that as a, as a, as a priority. Not a priority that trumps everything else. We're looking, I know that the Housing Authority capital plan has moved along a lot faster than it might have been thought to have been before. And that's a good thing because it would, that's, they need the leverage funding in order to drive that plan. We're not going to be able to fund $120 million out of CPC, but we can fund, I think, over, over a short period of time, if we can meet the, the up to $5 million or 5.5, which is their upper target figure. That can lever something that will really benefit that part of our housing stock in town in a way. It's now, how you balance all those things out, particularly when we also know that you never can tell when we're going to, exactly when we might get an opportunity for some of the conservation properties, which is another target area that are on the, that are privately held, but might become available to the town at a, at a, at a price that would be really favorable. We need to have some reserves to deal with that. So I don't envy you in the work. But the other side of the coin is, Emory Grover is bonded over, will be bonded over 20 years and won't even start for a couple of years out. So that if we're able, we should be able to, to meet the, the, the shorter term needs for the cash to leverage the, the housing authority projects. This is why I'm not on your committee. You've come in here and I had to say these things. And I do think, from what I can see, in terms of the, the information that's available, that we're in a good period for the state match. Now, I don't want you to substitute my optimistic presentation, evaluation of that for Dave's conservative numbers. But I do think that we're in for a few years, 25% or better match, which will at least help you if that turns out to be the case. So that would, that would be my thing, would be core capital needs should be a priority when they are, as a way, in your waiting, when they are, when they're, when they meet, when they qualify for, for CPC funding. The Emory Grover is a specific example of that. And at the same time, a substantial contribution to leverage the NHA capital project and, and, and be planning about opportunities that we might get for, for conservation properties. Take care of that.
That sounds very easy, Mr. Matthews. No, you know, and again, getting back to Emory Grover, you know, I think that's, that's something I think that we can agree on. I, I agree with your list. I, I do have a question as far as housing. I know that's been a focus. And Mr. Zimbone has been a focus of, of your efforts and the committee's efforts. Can you just explain for the viewing public kind of what your thought process is on, on trying to get more money for, in the, the housing bucket? And, and what your priorities are for housing?
Well, actually, we did it in that, the committee itself did an analysis with the assistance of our finance director of how we had spent our CPC funds over the first 15 years. And basically, 90% of them were spent between historic preservation and park rec. And with less than 10% being spent on community housing. Now, I, I don't know that that, I, I just want to say that that's not necessarily an indictment of, of prior committees or even town meeting, which voted on all these things. The act is flexible enough so that town's going to adjust for what their priorities are at a given time. And I don't disagree with Mr. Matthews' representation that we passed CPC and really initially in order to restore town hall. We saw it as an opportunity to leverage a, a surcharge on our property taxes with what, with what was then 100% match. So, but based on, on the analysis that we had done and some other factors, including the fact that this is a little nuanced or a little in the weeds, but the Housing Authority is not part of our town government. And as a result of the projects that come before us from, that are proposed by the Housing Authority cannot be bonded. They're not, they're not subject to town bonds. So, and, and in order to really designate available funds and make them available at that time, rather than pulling money out of the general reserve, we had come up with this proposal of doubling the reserve fund from 10% a year to 22% a year. And that is a year-to-year vote by town meeting. And it's a year-to-year pitch that we'll be making to both the select board and the finance committee, and then to our town meeting members. But if we, if we project out those numbers over the next, give me a second. I just want to. What that resulted from was that instead of $362,000, which would represent 11% of our CPA funds being devoted to the community housing bucket, we doubled it and it ended up being a little over $700,000. Just give me a second and I'll tell you what the numbers are.
While you're doing that, that is your goal to continue that funding moving forward?
Well, what we, I think that we put together a financial model that goes, that takes it out to 2026. And we're going to have over $5 million in the community housing bucket at that time, something like 5.5 million dollars. I'm stretching my memory a little bit. I apologize. You'll see that there's a limit to what you can do with tabs.
No, that's very helpful.
Okay. But what we anticipate though, is that we're going to be seeing some presentation by the Housing Authority. And that's who we anticipate coming before CPC for requests for funding soon, this year, next year, the following year. So we're going to have a good understanding about what amount of that 5.5 million dollars is going to be used. It, it, it could, they, they could very well be requesting additional funds. That I do not know. But I think in order to satisfy really the town meeting members and perhaps the finance committee and, and other, other individuals who are concerned about how we use our tax dollars, people are going to realistically want to see what is that you plan on spending that money on. I've had, you know, one committee member say that the worst thing we could do with CPC funds is just to have them sit in a bucket and not do anything. Right? So we want to leverage that money. But I anticipate that, that we'll be using that money. I've had conversations with the chair of the Housing Authority. And we anticipate that they're going to be submitting four applications to us for this year. I do anticipate, based on my conversations with him, that all of that can be funded from the reserve fund. So there's approximately $3 million in there now, maybe a little bit more. But I think that all of that, all of the, each of those requests could be funded from the reserve fund.
Great. And I agree with that assessment where, you know, town, we have multiple funds, rainy day funds for different things. And we do get questions if we start adding year after year, what are you going to be, use this for? You know, what, what is the plan? So I think to have a plan moving forward for use of those funds, I think is very appropriate. And I see Ms. Cooley has her hand up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the committee for their work and for their thoughtful way each year actually about thinking, even though the majority of the dollars have ended up, ended up in those two buckets, at looking at all the requests that come in and trying to think about how we take advantage of each area to provide some funding to the degree we can. I think we are on the verge at this point with the Affordable Housing Task Force that's going on under the planning board's jurisdiction. You know, with understanding some more about what the most strategic next steps will be for the town. And I'm hoping that that will help us figure out how to best leverage the funds that are being accrued here in CPC to do the most good.
Thank you. Marcus?
I, I just want to just respond to something about core functions. I, I do, I, I think that, you know, the devil's in the details on that. And so we, there are, there are some questions that have come before us about whether or not certain requests for funding should really be considered capital expenditures by the town. You know, that, that are, you know, catch basins and, and roads, et cetera. So I, I understand that there may be an element of if it's funding, if it, if it's funding in addition, and, and the added benefit is that it addresses a core function, if that's what you're saying, I understand that. Is that?
Yeah, I, I, I know that under some circumstances we can get catch, I'm not talking about catch base. I am talking about Emory Grover. So.
Yes. I, I know, I understand that, but the, but when in the end, we're left just with the language or the principle itself. So I just want to.
Yeah, I think one thing is, if it's, if it, if it's, if it's a loud expenditure and it's something that the town has to do, that should be one significant of the, and in each, under each one of your sections, there are several different factors that we weigh in. But that one, particularly for me, where we're talking about, well, sometimes our catch bases, maybe there's a way till next year. But this decision on Emory Grover was really, are we going to keep the oldest public building in service and fix it up so it can be used to do something that, work that has to be done each and every day? Or are we going to tear it down? And so that to me is a, is a focus. And I'd like to, and I'd like to put some substantial funds in it. On the other hand, while I've got the, the floor, the 20% for housing is a positive for me. And I'm not worried about leaving money in buckets because these, particularly when you talk about conservation and housing, we're talking about things that sometimes we're not in control of the timeline of the thing. Or sometimes a good opportunity comes up on very short notice. We need to plan to save the money to have it when we need it.
That, that's true. And, and we actually do, just so the viewing public understands, the conservation bucket always has at least a million dollars in it, which we always, we always kind of park that as an idea that that's a down payment. I don't know if this day and age, it, it, that it's a down payment for much of anything, but it's, 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 it's something. And I agree with you that with respect to especially the Housing Authority itself, we are trying to create a savings account that they could draw down on because they could not fund it by debt. They can only fund by savings. So in that circumstance, that's right. We and we have always eyed that relatively substantial amount of money that's in the community housing bucket as funds that would be available, likely available to the Housing Authority. I bring up the Housing Authority because it really is happens to be the only agency in our town that's whose charges and is responsible for delivering housing for low income people.
Right. And I I agree, twenty percent completely agree with that. We've had discussions in the past. As far as parking money a fund, I guess, my comment was, it doesn't have to be a specific, here's what we're going to do at this timeline. Just like when we have the athletics facility fund, we know that that money is going to be used at some time to improve a field. It can say, okay, we're going to put this money in this fund. And hopefully with the Housing Authority, like you said, our goal is to fund that at some time in the future where things come together. So I'm not opposed to it, sitting at a fund, just knowing that we have. That is the purpose. We still don't understand how we're going to get there yet. And I'm looking forward to the plan that we get because I think that is completely a priority for the town. And just getting back to Emery Grover, you know, if you look at the letter, this is a big pitch I know we're doing tonight, it sounds like, but I guess that's right. If you look at the letter from Historical Society, who outlines the historical nature of the building, it's not like it's bootstrapping a a core need and saying, well, it has some historical elements. Look at the clock or, you know, look at the parquet floors. I think when you look at that building, it's a historical building and it serves a core function. So that should have a little more intention and weight than I think maybe other projects might. But
So I I do go ahead. I'm sorry.
Add a different subject, so you can
Oh, go ahead.
I don't remember what our our responsibility on in Community Preservation Committee. We have a responsibility to preserve historic artifacts and historic buildings. So we're, we have preservationists on our committee.
Yes.
It's there aren't, there aren't a lot of people on the committee saying that we should tear down the building. And that's not, that's really not the charge of the committee either. So really, the assessment and the analysis that we've gone through and that we've struggled with is what do we do with a limited amount of dollars? That's that's all that that's really the the discussion that has that's really that we've really centered on. And and if we spend this amount of money over this period of time on this particular project, how is that going to impact other potential applications on the going going forward? And that's why one of the things that we would like to see is where are we going? Five, ten, six, seven, eight years out? Where are we going? And what are the priorities for the town? Because I think the committee, for the most part, we we would like to be adjudicators, if you will. And we would like to be just be we would, we enjoy the process. We want to go through the process. We want to do our due diligence. We want to analyze the 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 requests. And we want to make, take a vote, applying the facts to the CPA and applying the facts to our to our to our town plan. And that's why we're coming back to those stakeholders and saying we need to have some refreshed data and refreshed statement of needs by each of the constituent groups in order for us to do an effective job.
Great. And before I turn it over to Marcus, what would be the best way for our input in this process? I know you're looking at two thousand fourteen. I'm not sure how it was done then, but is that something that I guess we'd have a meeting on and and forward to you are are priorities of?
So I wasn't sure. I think the Select Board actually has a is going to have input into each one of those four areas. So let me just so what I ask for is that if you go to the CPC plan, beginning on page twelve, there is for each of the four constituent groups, there's a statement of need and just bear with me. I'm reading my notes. So there's a statement of need, there are goals, and there are then factors for consideration for each of those those four areas. We don't have staff that's actually doing the drafting for us. So it would be us, it would be the committee. And so I I I would, if we can get something in writing from the Select Board, I don't, I I'm sorry, but I'm just not familiar enough.
No, that's fine. And I'm not meaning to put you on. So I was asking how. But so maybe in our goal session that we have, that's one of our goals to come up with a list or a priorities that you can
But I I think that what Mr. Matthews mentioned with regarding his his issue regarding core functions, that's something that should be in writing.
Right.
Okay, something else that I think has been discussed kind of at various times is there we've had requests for for funding to preserve historic artifacts or historic buildings that aren't town owned, that aren't publicly owned. There may be a factor that we want to consider as a town about what it is that we're looking for, what what our level of funding is, what our level of commitment is. Because as it is now, there's there's no distinction in this plan between a government owned property and a privately owned property. I mean, there there are deed restrictions that we could we could place, historic preservation restrictions. Ms. McKnight is very familiar with them to protect our investment in a privately owned historic structure. But it may be that we actually want to address the actual core amount of what it is that we're willing to fund. So that's another factor that I think is something that 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 would be a Select Board factor or issue that you want to address. And and I I could follow up if you'll after the meeting with an email to the
No, that's fine. I know that came up with the the church funding that we had. And I think maybe the twenty percent, you know, or increased funding for housing might be part of our discussion too. Mr. Zimbona, and then I do want to turn it to Marcus.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as another example, with respect to the housing, our portion of of the CPA money that goes towards affordable housing is just a small percentage of what they're actually going to get. With already, they've they've managed to earmark some state funds for this purpose. And also with some of the recent legislation that's being passed and pondered, there's ample opportunity again for us to leverage our money and take advantage of that. And so as you're thinking about priorities, where is it that we can get the biggest bang for the dollar, if you will? And that's one of the areas, I think, that and that's one of the reasons why we went to increasing the money available. And if affordable housing buckets. So allocate. It's just something to keep in mind as you're establishing your parents.
Makes sense. Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you all for being here. As far as the twenty two percent, now that we're there, is there a chance it may be less or more to get to that five point five million is so could it fluctuate? Or is this where we're going to be going forward? Or is that the idea for CPC?
I think the the idea would be that we would have this program in place for a number of years. But but I I I think that in order to be fair to the process, it is, it is an allocation that's voted as a separate warrant article annually at each town meeting. So I don't want to be presumptuous in it with respect to that decision. It's a it's first of all, there's advice and and consultation that comes from Finance Committee and from your board. And then ultimately, the the town, the town meeting members. But we we have a, I have seen a financial summary where we projected it out into twenty twenty six. I believe that's the case. So and that's, I think, how we came up with our five point five million dollars anticipated in that bucket. So
It's approved every year.
It'll be approved
around that number.
Approved every year around that number. But again, a factor that, you know, something that's going to be discussed each year by our committee and then voted on. But I think that there's a lot of support for that. And it because of our understanding about what we could do with that money and how it is that we can fund the needs of our the Housing Authority through that mechanism.
Okay. And like Rick said, it's something that is a fraction of what that we're able to get aside, you know, from state funding and everything else will be kind of a much larger pot, I guess. And and how we leverage that is going to be important. And you know, how much we're able to get overall, not just from what CPA is going to be providing.
Yeah, correct. That's right. It it that money and and most of those, the the affordable housing projects that that are being developed in this era are look looking for local support of some sort, which indicates both a financial buy in, but also also a political buy in, that there's a political will in the community. So it's important for us if we want to develop additional affordable housing in our town to actually make that kind of financial contribution. I mean, that's speaking a little bit out of my lane on CPC and a little bit into this other avocation, if you will, housing. But and so we understand the importance of that. And it does point to another factor that is is throughout our plan, which is will these funds be used to leverage additional funds to bring a bigger project? So the this, that's a perfect example of using, you know, five million dollars to bring forty million dollars or more than that into town. So that's a perfect example. And it's actually a really great use of our CPC funds. And traditionally, it's always been something that's been well received by our town meeting members. A lot of lot of talk about leverage at among the finance members of our town meeting.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to reassure the committee that we don't expect them to do their own editing. And the staff liaison and her team will help you with that.
Okay, great, great. Any further? Yes.
I read the report or the 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 twenty fourteen plan. And my thinking is that it might be good to almost take the first pass through it soon and 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 to create kind of maybe a test red line update. And then, I mean, there's some language uses or some things that you pointed out that are expired. Take those out and then show us what a draft of a of an update for twenty twenty one would be. And then we could try to give you some focused comments on those. Otherwise, you might pick up a lot of comments that are just housekeeping that should be done, but you don't, you don't need it that way.
Okay. Well, the plan itself, I've I've read it a number of times. And I and I it's a, I think it's a pretty good document, pretty good working document. And so I was focusing in particular on those those subset running from page twelve to twenty. But if you, I'll, I'll read through it again. And if there's language there that needs to be, if that's what your proposal is.
Well, and I'm just saying, I mean, yeah, we had to our board that is to kind of caucus, particularly when sometime when we're when there's five of us in one room. And 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 figure out exactly what our view is. I've said a lot about how I think, but but definitely we'll we'll let you know and can participate. I think it clearly will benefit from being updated. And I think these issues are going to come into focus a lot as we try to meet several competing goals that I think we can, we can do. We need to be careful. And you guys are doing the work.
Yep, I I want to bring out one other point. Parking Rec is left, but they, I I noticed that, first of all, they're they have a tremendous amount of demand being placed on them. And things are evolving and changing. And our population is changing. And the demands of our citizens are changing, evolving. And it seems like a lot of it's falling on them. But I do recall that a couple of years ago, we had a tie in bond, a survey done by Time Bond regarding open space and recreation uses.
Open space.
Open space plan. And I don't know what the status of that is, is if it's been finalized or not. But it seems to me that that is something that could be taken off the shelf and used and plugged into our CPA plan. We went through a lot. We we had public hearings regarding that plan. And and there's a lot of data, I assume there's a lot of data out there that we can use that would that can be plugged right into CPA plan that takes care of one out of the four. The and the second one that's relatively easy is that I assume that the Housing Authority is going to be able to plug in what their goals are based on their capital plan that they've done in the last twenty four months. So that leaves open space and historic artifacts, sort of resources, which is, I don't know that that's a huge lift. I think that there's probably some changes. There's maybe some goals there that you want to talk about in terms of climate change.
Two initials of the historic capacity.
What?
EG.
Okay, okay. Here's what I'll say, because we we have to move. I, number one, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
And thanks for all your work. As I previously said, I think taking it from here, our board is going to meet, we have a goal setting session. And this will be on that list. And we will come up and whether or not you get to editing it before then, that's not going to hold it up. We're a parallel tracks here. And we're going to come up with our needs and wants and wishes and direction. And then we'll get that over to you. Again, as Kate said, we'll have staff work to help out with this whole process. So I'm glad it is time for a refreshment. And hopefully in the future, we'll refresh it even more, even quicker than than this. But thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Take care.
Everyone.
Thanks, Jean. Thanks, Art.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks. Thanks, Marcus. That's good.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Director of Public Works, Karis Lustig, sign notice traffic regulation for Arden Street.
Thank you again. So normally, when we come, DPW comes before the board to make recommendations for additional traffic signage. It's usually run through our Traffic Management Advisory Committee. This particular request, though, comes directly from the Department of Public Works. When we designed our safety zone that was voted on in the last meeting, we had assumed that there was a stop sign at Arden as it entered Beaufort. We have also received requests from neighbors to add a stop sign on Arden. So this request is to confirm that and to put the regulation in place to install the stop sign.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Remove.
And I will read that motion. The board vote to approve and sign the notice of traffic regulation permit number SS twenty one dash eleven dash zero nine, requiring that Arden Street westbound be designated as a stop street at the intersection of Beaufort Avenue. And that's been moved by Mr. Matthews. Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion and second, is there a discussion on this motion? I mean, we do have a a map in our packet indicating where that stop sign will be and how that will affect those neighborhoods. Ms. Cooley?
I was just going to say, I appreciate the map, and I can understand why you would have thought there was a stop sign there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, noting that back in the day, there didn't need to be a stop sign there because it was a hard packed dirt and rock street that functioned as left field for the Harris School baseball diamond. But now that it's a paved road, I'd say a a stop sign would be a good idea.
You remember those days, Mr. Matthews?
I most certainly.
Just making sure.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, we come to the vote. Ms. Cooley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Thanks, Ms. Lustig.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Town Manager Report. Ms. Pat.
Just a few quick things, Mr. Chair. The blue tree lighting is back. So we had a hiatus last year during which we had a virtual lighting, but we will be having blue tree lighting on Saturday, December fourth, so Saturday, December fourth, which is the weekend after the Thanksgiving weekend from five to six on the square. So we are very excited. Team is putting that together. You mentioned it earlier, but just a second reminder of Veterans Day this Thursday, quarter of eleven is when if you're going to get up to Memorial Park and you want good parking, please get up there then. And then I I I didn't think this day would ever come, Mr. Chair, but yesterday Fire Station Two opened. It's been a long road that we have been working on, planning and seeking funding and getting that property so the public could see it. And it's just a, it's a, it's an amazing transformation on that corner and for the safety of our staff and for the preservation of our equipment. And the amazing fifteen hundred pound bell that is suspended up there that used to be in the Parker School in Charles River Village, which we are, is on loan from the Historic Commission. And I will note, the Historic Commission did tell us that it would be unhistoric to shine it. So it is in its all its glory with its pattern. It's a beautiful bell. But most importantly, you know, thanking the board and everyone, the Planning Board and everybody who worked on this project. It's an enormous project, and it's very well received by by the department. And that leaves us only the police station that we're hoping to open up sometime in the February timeframe.
Great. I was asked about that the other day about the, and it's February. Is that correct? That's the, that's the goal?
Time frame.
Time frame, even better. I drove by that, I think it was Monday, and I saw a building commission in the parking lot. I said, this is curious. So I was just hoping you got the final CO, which they're all set. And then I heard So I was just hoping you got the final CO, which is all set. And then I heard as much. And what a great place for our firefighters and many, many years moving forward. So thank you.
We will set up a tour for each one.
That sounds good. Looking forward. Any other items? No? Okay, thank you. Are there any committee reports? Seeing and hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good night, everybody.